All right, it's good to have everybody with us tonight. And I'd like to call the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular board meeting to order at six o'clock P. M. And I've asked Board Member Tommy Garthrell if we could all stay in. He's going to lead us in our invocation.
Good evening, everybody. Gracious, kind, loving Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together and conduct school business for the needs of our staff, our community, and our children. Thank you, Lord, for our staff, and mostly for our children and the families who trust us with those children. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amy Gibson could lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank our greeters at tonight's meeting. We had Canyon Petty, Principal at Pickens Junior High School, and Angie Crutchmire, our Principal at Hill City Elementary, and the All-State Board members. All right, next items, approval of our agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So do.
Amy Gibson, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Sue Finley, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, the agenda is approved. All right, Dr. Thomas, I think we have some recognitions at this time, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we will be celebrating our Dragon Awards. This is in honor of teachers, support staff members, and students from all grade levels and disciplines who are making a difference in our school district. As a reminder, there are two Dragon Award winners each month, and you earn this distinction by being nominated. Anyone can nominate, and these nominations are reviewed by our Human Resources and Communications Team, who selects the recipients. This month, we have two Dragon Awards. One will go to a teacher in grades five through eight, and then another will go to someone from our maintenance or custodial staff. And so, Mr. Chris Parker, our Assistant Superintendent, will be now reading the nominations for our Dragon Award recipients. And then after our Dragon Awards, Mr. Parker will have an additional recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Yeah, goal area three of our strategic plans about communication engagement, we want to maximize our communication, our community engagement. Part of the way we do that is through these Dragon Awards every month. So, this month, first, we're going to recognize the teacher at Pickens Junior High, Ms. Kristen Deering. So, hold on, Kristen, don't come up yet, I'm going to read about you. We're going to read what the principal said about you. You ready? Publicly. Since the start of the school year, Kristen has selfishly volunteered to help whenever and wherever needed. From morning drop-off duty to mentoring colleagues, she ensures Pickens Junior High is a positive place to learn and work. From parent conference night, she coordinated dinner for her colleagues without being asked. It's the type of person she is, and she always thinks of others. Pickens Junior High is lucky to have Coach Deering. Now, come on up, Kristen. Let's get a look at her.
All right. Thank you.
Let's take a picture.
Takes right to the center.
That award just gets placed. All right. Thank you, Kristen. Can you shake her hand?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Kristen. I can assure you Canyon's never said so many nice things about me, so she doesn't just say that. So, our second reception today is Ms. Jenny Quentin at Harmony Elementary. She's our lead custodian at Harmony. And before she comes up, I want to read, I want you to know, Jenny, we had like, one, two, three, four, five, nine or ten different people sent a citation about you to say. So, I'm just going to read the first sentence, because, you know, we can't be here all day. But this, these are the things we heard over and over. She always does anything anyone asks it extra. Jenny is a true unsung hero and committed to serving others. She's always willing to help out any way she can. She's constantly working, loves our kids, and respects others. Ms. Jenny has always gone above and beyond to help others in the school. Ms. Jenny is the best. She always volunteers to help deliver things from the office or anything else we need. Jenny is always willing to go the extra mile. Jenny shows leadership skills and genuinely cares about the rooms and the building. These are from all different people, so I'll tell you what they think of you. So Jenny, come on down, let's recognize you. Thanks, gentlemen.
of Prevent Blindness of Georgia. And the mission of Prevent Blindness of Georgia is in the name. Obviously, this is a group that goes around screening students for vision and providing some of that vision care for students. They have actually screened our entire district, I think, for students over the last few years. This is led by a donor named Lee Moran. Lee actually can't be with us tonight, thought she could be, but she's actually seeking treatment in the Mayo Clinic in Minnesota. She says she wishes she could be here, but she's not able to be here, but she sent her people. And we're going to recognize them, because they, they, this group has donated an enormous amount of money and time to our children. And I've seen hundreds of kids, is that fair to say, Gil, in our district that did not know they needed glasses or did have issues with vision being corrected. And Ms. Moran has paid for this on her own. She didn't want any recognition. We just wanted to recognize her. So, with this, so we have something for Ms. Moran, acknowledging her commitment to preventing blindness and preserving sight by enabling students to have certified vision screenings, comprehensive eye exams, and prescription eyeglasses for all who require them at no charge to the students and their families. That's her mission. So, we're going to recognize her team at Prevent Blindness, which is Chavette Turner and Lakeisha Kenny. And we're going, we got something for both of them, too. We knew they were coming. Acknowledging their dedication and exceptional service in improving children's vision and eye health in Pickens County by identifying and referring schoolchildren with potential vision problems to a free, school-based eye clinic, where students receive free comprehensive exams, and if needed, they get free glasses. So, they've done a lot for us. We want to bring up Ms. Kenny and Ms. Turner at this time and recognize them. Thank you. We're going to take a picture. Yeah, at this time, to get a better understanding of what we're talking about, because we, we can recognize a lot of people, but we really want to put an emphasis on Ms. Moran and what she's been able to do. So, Prevent Blindness was able to make a video. This is something that's going out national, but about one of our students and one of our staff members. So, we want to show you that video at this time.
Know that there's a barrier that needs to be addressed. It's not picked up on automatically in the classroom, it's not picked up by a coach or in extracurricular activities.
Well, that's exactly what happened here with Micah.
Micah, he's kind, and he's caring, and he's an athletic little boy.
I play baseball and basketball, and I really want to play football next year.
He's a paternal twin, two-for-one deal.
That's awesome.
We like to wrestle a lot.
He is an honor roll student.
I love school, it's a good place to learn.
Vision is important, because if you can't read in the future, you might not be able to drive and get your driver's license. You might not be able to further your education and go to college.
You know, catching things early is key, and that's why it's important to have an effective screening program. So, our mission is to prevent blindness and preserve sight. We go across the state providing screening services. As of late, we are providing our Circle of Vision Program. We bring our doctor and all of our equipment. We provide comprehensive eye exams on-site. The kids are paid two parent classes, one for home, one for school. We try and do the appointments as early as possible in the day. We found that you had an astigmatism. After the screening, we wanted to refer you on to see the doctor. She picked up on your ambliopia. But most people know it as lazy eye, but it's actually decreased vision in one eye. It's the most common cause of childhood blindness, but it's the most treatable if detected early enough. Micah, how was that experience for you?
It was a blessing, because I didn't know I had bad vision.
It hasn't improved greatly because of the glasses.
When I'm playing sports, I have to see the ball. If I don't, then I might miss the ball. It's really fun to spend time with my brother.
I love being a school nurse. It's my job to keep kids healthy, to try to be an advocate for them. I was ultimately in shock, even cried a little bit, the day that we found out, because there had been so many years that it had gone undetected. I did kind of feel like a bad mom, which is only human. He didn't show any of the signs, he didn't have any complaints. With all of the resources that we do have, I still think that we would have never known if it hadn't been for Prevent Blindness of Georgia.
There are so many other parents that are going through the same thing. You can't pick up on something like that unless you have organizations like ours that come in and do the work.
My husband is in the military, so they deployed for nine months. He's thankful, too. He really is. He's thankful that he was able to help coach this year. Financial hardships are not just in the back, but also at the forefront.
We are here to provide vision services for children in the state of Georgia. Insurance never comes into play. Insured, underinsured, it doesn't matter.
Chavette, I just want to thank you and Prevent Blindness of Georgia, because you truly have no idea how grateful we are and how blessed we are.
We couldn't do what we do without amazing families like you. Micah, thank you so much for being awesome, and you really do look handsome in your eyes.
The more sponsors or funders or whomever is able to help, the more lives that will be changed, because I know ours was.
Thank you, Chavette and Lakeisha. Please pass our message on to Ms. Moran. Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
I blame Micah and his brother back there. Yeah, there he is. You guys are so happy for each other.
And big brother is here, too.
He is, too. He said his brother, but, you know, I guess I'm just shoplifting.
All right, we're moving into the more technical part of our meeting now. The recognitions are over. If anyone wants to leave, this is a good time to do that now before we start our reports. All right. So, Dr. Thomas, I'm going to turn it over to you to begin our superintendent reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will begin with student achievement, and I'll be filling in with Dr. May, who actually is really sick. So, I'm going to start by talking about student achievement and success. That's our first goal area in our district strategic plan. And a couple of items I want to touch on in this area. First of all, this is our year for accreditation, and we're doing this through Cognia, and we are where we're supposed to be right now. We are working away through the timelines, gathering evidence that supports our achievement. We're progressing nicely. We've, there's four different tasks that schools in the district have to complete. Task one is complete. Task two and three are due the first week in December, so we're where we need to be with our accreditation, so that's, that's good news. Second, the state assesses schools and districts through a mechanism called CCRPI, which stands for the College and Career Ready Performance Index. This has been around with us for several years. It takes a look at how well our kids do on the Georgia milestones, but it also looks at how well our students progress in English and math. It also looks at how well our subgroups perform, and it looks how well our kids demonstrate readiness, which means that are they ready to go from middle to high school? Are they ready to go from elementary to middle, or a high school to post-secondary? So, I just want to let you know that we are beginning to get the data back for CCRPI. We've gotten several buckets from the state, but we've not yet gotten everything back, and that should be done and completed by mid-December. And the last thing I'll share with you, we are continuing with our training for our new English Language Arts resources with Bitchmark Advance. We had our last whole group training this past Tuesday during our virtual day, and we'll still have onsite coaching that will be catered at each school throughout the year. But that's an update from student achievement. At this time, I'm going to call up our director, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, sorry, of Technology, excuse me, Dr. Shae, Dr. Patrick Shae, and he's going to give us a technology update. Dr. Shae, apologize for that.
Or Teaching and Learning, or whatever. Good evening, thank you, Assistant Thomas and board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak about the Technology Department. So, area four of our strategic plan is organizational and operational effectiveness. This is where I kind of fall into things, make sure things still work, excuse me. Right now, we're going to focus on the increased safety protocols for all online resources. As you know, that there's been some fun stuff going around in the state of Georgia and all over the country. We have avoided the two-factor authentication or multi-factor authentication for a long time, trying to keep that pain away from our, our teachers. We thought we had a pretty good, secure environment, but it becomes more and more obvious that we have to implement this, this level of, of security. And what this allows us to do is it not only secures our network, but it also secures the individuals that are, are using our network. So, teachers and staff members and students are not succumb to any type of phishing or scamming that they may lose, lose money over. And what this allows us to do is verify who is logging in and checking emails and getting into drives. So, and there's a couple of different ways that the teachers can choose to do that. So, that's been left up to them. And this is kind of small, but what this is, and this is why the, the second thing that we've done, is not only done the multi-factor authentication or two-factor authentication, we've also blocked VPNs, virtual networks. They advertise them on television, people use them all over, all, all the time, and they're perfectly fine. What they, what it allows you to do is kind of circumvent some areas of the internet or some security rules. And we have found that we have VPNs coming in from other parts of the world. We have four hundred and eighteen VPNs that are attempting to hit us from, from, from China. So, that was a little concerning. So, we made sure that we put in rules that no non-US VPNs can, can get into our system. Now, we understand that students and teachers need VPNs for certain reasons. We don't like them in school, because they kind of get around our rules, but while they're on our campus and while they're using our equipment, we want to make sure that we block foreign invaders. So, that's why the VPN was blocked. Questions so far? Nope. So, the two-factor authentication, all right, highlights. These are some of the things that we're, we're doing. Oh, I went too far. So far, we've removed Windows eleven from our, or Windows ten from our environment, is no longer supported by Microsoft, leaving big holes in our network, so that has been removed. We replaced four hundred and fifty access points with the new Ruckus model, which previous model had been in, in place for over ten years. So, we had used it and abused it, and now the performance that we get out of the new ones is stronger, gives us more visibility into the items that are attaching to our network as well. So, we'll get many, many years out of these. And the last big priority that we're doing is on the Network Operations Center. You may have heard about it, we've talked about it for a long time, but what this is, we're relocating our Network Operations Center, our server room, from the old boardroom down to transportation. That isn't a matter of just unplugging things and plugging things back in. We need to, we're working with a company now that is giving us information. They're doing pen testing, this is penetration testing, so they're testing our security, they're testing our environment. They're behind the scenes, no one sees what they're doing, they're not affecting the teachers and the students. They're gathering all that information, and they're coming back to us with what our best options for going forward with our network is. Do we offload some stuff into a cloud? Do we consolidate into virtual servers? We don't need that large of a footprint any longer, but we need to make sure that we keep everybody safe and secure, and we control the things that we need to control. That's not my area of expertise, so we're getting some, some experts to help us with that. So, our next one will be, once they do the pen testing and they give us information about what we're going to do, then they'll give us security audits before and after, and then we'll talk about replacement, repurposing. Will we introduce a new piece of software, a new piece of hardware or something to help that run more efficiently? And then we'll remove a lot of the old systems that are just antiquated and are no longer, no longer, we don't need any of the Windows ten stuff or any of the previous stuff, so we can downsize the size of our server room. This is our daily reality check. Our techs deal with over eight hundred devices, eight hundred devices a day, and that's from our staff members, between laptops and phones and printers and everything that plugs into a wall or uses our Wi-Fi. Our tech staff deals about eight hundred devices. We have about four thousand devices that our students use on a daily basis. Not only Chromebooks, but iPads and some combination of both, and we also have computer labs. But what I wanted to show you here, this is a picture of what we call Lightspeed, and that's our dashboard, at which we see what our students are doing with their Chromebooks on and off campus, very similar to what we can see what teachers are doing, we can also see what students are doing. And I wanted to illustrate, this is the last thirty days. We have one point one million visits for our students to Clever. That's the top thing that they were going to. So, all the parents that are complaining about the students are using Chromebooks or, you know, teachers are saying that they're not using them correctly or playing them. To me, this is a small priori, a small section of that, when I see one point one million clicks to get to Clever in a month, I mean, that's a lot of what our students are doing. And if you look at the top, there's Google, there's Instruction, there's iExcel, there's Google, there's accounts, then you get down to YouTube, but YouTube also is embedded in a lot of our, in a lot of our software, so they, they included those clips. So, I wanted to just illustrate that our students are doing what they're supposed to be doing, for the most part.
Dr. Shae, a lot of people don't understand, would you explain to what Clever is?
Clever is our platform that sits on top of our, our Chrome base. Students have a laptop, it's called a Chromebook, and instead of having to go and open up a web browser and go to each individual website that students might need to go to, we provided a dashboard with all the links that they need, and that's called the Clever Dashboard. So, they log into Clever, they select the application where they want to go, and they don't have to do another password or login again. It brings them all the way through. And also, what Clever allows us to do is target individual applications to, to individual students or individual classes, because we can base that on the rostering that's happening in IC, which feeds Clever. So, we good? Questions? Okay. The, the next slide is, this is our overall security vision of our district at this moment. When we take a look at our firewall, which is SOFOs, we pay a lot of money for it and keep it up to date, we keep it patched, we keep it running, and we, we really watch it carefully. And we're getting a ninety-nine percent overall health rating at this point in time. It means there's no holes, there's no computers sitting out there that shouldn't be that are running something in the background. We've shut all that stuff down. So, internally, going out, we're good. Our fight is normally from the outside coming in, so. And just to wrap it up, this is what my techs have done at their different locations, and you see that one-to-one is the application that we use for entering tickets. Some schools are very good at entering tickets, and my techs are very good at closing them. Some schools are not as, as aggressive with this system as, we, we, I know that my techs are out there fixing things, but sometimes they don't stop to enter a ticket for somebody else that they haven't done to close. So, if you, if you're an administrator and you're concerned about your numbers, we can talk, but other than that, just want to let you, give you an idea of what we're up against. So, questions, concerns, anything that I can do? I know you've heard a lot of things in the news lately. There was a district really close by that got hit a couple of weeks ago and went through a lot of pain points. Keeps me up at night, you know, because, you know, we do what our, we do what we can, but at some point in time, we become a target. And right now, we're blocking as much as we can from the outside. Our staff is helping us identify phishing, and those types of things are being very careful. We've done two-factor authentication, so we continue to, to look for the holes, and we continue to plug the holes as we find them, so.
Sounds great so far.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, I'll call up our Chief Financial Officer, Amy Smith, to give us a finance update.
Thank you, Dr. Shae. I always have to do so. Like Dr. Shae, finance falls under goal area three, which is operational and organizational effectiveness. These monthly reports keep the board in the know about what we're doing with our finances, and it's also to help the public to know what we're doing here in the school system with our money. And we have our general fund summary up through the month of October. We have collected fourteen point one-five percent of our budgeted revenue and expended twenty-three point oh-seven percent of our approved budgeted expenditures. On our consolidation of funds, you're going to see a big jump. We finally got some of those federal grants approved, got a big old amendment out there for you tonight. But in this category, this is where most of the instructional funds are out at the school level. It's called Fund One Fifty Year Consolidation of Funds, and it's all, just remind you, it's a blending of those federal funds with some local funds that creates a whole lot of flexibility for our school, creates a whole lot of paperwork for the central office, but it gives them the flexibility to not have to deal with that red tape, so we're really happy that we can do that, and it goes very smoothly for the schools. The ones who have been in the system for a long time may remember, we used to have quite a bit of paperwork at the school level. So, this, having this as part of our system, and every system does not do this. It removes that time element that principals have to deal with and the bookkeepers have to deal with, teachers have to deal with in the school, so they can focus on educating the students. This reflects the expenditures and the transfers to and from federal funds through the month of October, and we are well on target. And if you scroll down, as we love to report, we have no debt in Pickens County. Our capital outlay, our SPOSS revenue for the month of October twenty twenty-four was seven hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. We had twenty thousand dollars in donations for our Tate Playground project and earned seven hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents in interest. Our expenditures totaled six hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for the month, and our ending SPOSS balance was eight million eight hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred nine dollars and ninety-two cents. On the report there, you can just see the budgeted revenue and expenditures and the percentage of each that we have for the month. So, we are staying on target, because we have quite large projects going on right now. Special revenue, we've collected thirteen point nine-five percent of our budgeted revenue, and this is for federal funds, school and school nutrition for the most part, and we have expended thirty-five point oh-three percent of those budgeted expenditures. And remember, this is a poll area, this is where we spend the money first, and then we get a reimbursement, so your expense will be higher than what your revenue is until we get to year end. Do y'all have any questions?
Ms. Smith, based on the SPOSS number, we are still well on track for our five-year plan for renovations and whatnot. We are where we should be at this point.
We are where we should be. We are ahead of where we should be. We're going to cap out early in this SPOSS, affectionately call it SPOSS six, that's our sixth renewal. So, we are ahead, our, what it means is we have what we anticipated getting years ago when we were What it means is we have, what we anticipated getting years ago when we were asking for the renewal of this SPOS, we collected more monies than we predicted we would. The growth in those revenues over the last three, four years has been phenomenal. In fact, the growth in the last three years has averaged almost 8% per year. And prior, one, year one of this SPOS, we had over a 14% increase in revenue from the prior year. So that is just phenomenal growth. We dropped down to about 2% to 3% the next year and jumped back up. So we have an average up and get 7.82% for the last three years. So we will probably end this one early. But we are ahead of, revenue-wise, we're ahead where we thought we would be. So it has put us in a good position to go ahead and move some projects forward quicker than we thought we would be able to.
And would you remind us what SPOS pays for?
Oh, wow.
What qualifies, what qualifies under SPOS as opposed to general fund?
It is, it is typically a, what they call a capital outlay. So it's going to be a larger project. For example, we have built schools. We built Hill City and Harmony Elementary with SPOS funds. We have done projects like major roof replacements. Like this summer, we did Pickens Junior High School and Pickens High School. The ag facility at PJ and at Pickens High School, we built them solely out of SPOS funds. I could go on, I probably could create a two-page list. We have bought, we buy buses, school buses every year out of those funds. Like, I'll give you an example. This year, we got bus bond money and it's on the amendment tonight. We get $88,100 for a bus. They may cost 120 to 160 for a bus. We pick up the rest with SPOS money. We're able to do that. So we do usually about six buses each year. And our fleet is less than 10 years, our average is less than 10 years old. And that's great in the state of Georgia. And we always have excellent ratings when the DOT and the DOE come and do our annual evaluations. So we have air-conditioned buses here in August and September and October. That's awfully nice for our students and our drivers. Technology, we slated about a million and a half in our budget this year for technology alone. Last year, we spent 1.4 million on Promethean boards and they were populated throughout the county. That was a large project. We keep servers renewed, the mobile carts, the, I'm trying to think, all the things he just said. All of the technology that we bought is in a classroom, in a media center. It can be in technology, it can be in transportation. These items, a lot of the items that we do through transportation when we do iPads, a lot of times, if we can, we will tap SPOS. Sometimes it's general fund, most of the time it's SPOS. It is larger initiatives. It's not your typical, it should not be, it cannot be salary benefits. It should not be a normal maintenance. It, it shouldn't be paper and pencils for the students, things like that. It is larger initiatives. These always have to go on a referendum that is put before the public, people of Pickens County to vote for. And it tells what items we are asking for. So they have to vote and, you know, they approve or don't approve for us to do it. We've never failed SPOS. And ours is specifically educational. So people do get confused about the T-SPOS, which is a, has to do with the county government. County government also has another 1%. We have a 1% that has been in place since 1997 that has built many facilities. It has built stadiums and tracks and any kind of renovation, larger renovation and modification. And I will be happy to provide you a list. Like I said, we've had, we're on SPOS 6. So we're, we're in excess of about 25 years worth of, or 24, 25 years worth of SPOS. So that has been a fantastic advantage for the school system. Our alternative to pay for those items is property taxes. So we don't have a lot of places to go to ask for money. One, we earn QVE based on our state account. And we have the millage rate to have, to generate property taxes to help pay. And that's what helps, about half the general fund is made up of property tax. The other half is QE. So if we did not have SPOS, we would be looking at increasing property taxes for that purpose. What's wonderful about SPOS is people of Pickens County don't put all that money in. Everybody passing through, everybody that stops in Pickens County to buy something anywhere here, part of that one cent tax comes from outside of this county. And so it helps relieve some of the tax burden here. So.
So you're saying then, when we go to the polling places and one of the things on the ballot is the referendum SPOS, it may be millions, like this was 35 million.
The cap on this was 35.
We're not taxing the residents to pull that in necessarily. It's just the sales tax, right?
It's sales tax. It is not property tax. It is not a 1% on a piece of land or a personal property tax, like on a piece of equipment or a boat or a car.
Okay.
It is a sales tax. You go to Walmart and you buy your groceries. There is a 1% portion that will go to the county government and they will disperse it to us. So that, and anybody who goes there, that's, that's the beauty of it is that anybody who passes through here can help us fund our facilities. So all these people that come to our games and encourage them to go eat here, go, go buy, go get the quick store, any of that, anybody who comes through here, it helps us fund our, our educational facilities. But it is, it is for larger items. And those are the ones that are really, you know, more expensive. Building a school is expensive now. Renovating a school is expensive.
So when I see all those millions on, on the ballot, you're not asking me to pay millions and millions?
Correct.
You just want me to buy a coat?
I want you to buy a coat. I want you to shop local. Everybody shop local. That does help the school system in the county. Do y'all have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. At this time, we'll call up Mr. Parker, our Assistant Superintendent, who will give us an operations and construction update.
Really want to appreciate you guys for asking Amy that question instead of me. But as the guy that supervises many departments, including resource, let me iterate really that SPOS is paid for salaries and benefits. So Amy said that, but that is one thing. People do get confused sometimes, but we're not able legally to do that. But thank you for that, Amy. That was a very good description of what that does. So with Operation Construction this month, I'm going to cede my time, even though except a little bit I just took, to Ms. Beth Thompson, our wonderful food service, school nutrition director. And she's going to tell you about what's going on with school nutrition.
Thank you, Minister Parker. Okay, good evening, board members, Dr. Thomas. Okay, so, oops. You mentioned this is the more technical part of the board meeting, but alas, it is not. I have one statistic on, I have one slide that I'm going to hold in slow motion for 30 seconds for you to read it. All the rest is fluff tonight, okay? I was charged with five minutes. I think it's five minutes and 38 seconds, so bear with me. But the school nutrition, I mean, it is not static. We are constantly moving, shaking. Our federal regulations are just unreal. They're constantly getting stricter and stricter. But amid all that, we do have a lot of fun. We've been very busy the last few years and it's been a very exciting time for all of us. So with that, I'd like to let Martha go ahead and start our slideshow. Martha?
It'll come.
Okay. That's my brain bench.
That's all, folks.
Let me say real quick, Dr. Thomas, we won this Golden Radish Award at the state for our farm to table. That means stuff the students and the teachers have grown in school, they put back in. So I wanted to highlight that and thank Beth, because this is one of the hardest working people I have ever worked with, Beth Thompson. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Just a few things, I want to give some comments out to a few things that happened in our school system recently. Good news, we had two of our schools recognized recently for academic achievement. We had Harmony Elementary that was recognized by the George Department of Education for student performance in the area of English Language Arts. They were recognized as a 23-24 literacy leader based on their performance in third grade and fourth grade English Language Arts. We also had Pickens High School that was recognized as a 23-24 math leader school for high school growth. So we're excited about that. Congratulations to our students, our teachers and staff at both Harmony and Pickens High School. Let's give them a round of applause. Last Tuesday, we had our first ever safety summit here at the board office. We had school safety teams from each of our schools. They met with local law enforcement. We worked through two different tabletop activities involving two different crisis scenarios. It was a very successful morning, which our folks took very, very seriously. And we are planning to make this event something we do at least every school year, at least one time. And I also want to say we're very, very appreciative of the collaboration that we have in our district with our sheriff's office. Because that would not be possible without them. The fall athletic season has just about finished up. We had some really good news with our athletics. Our Nets and softball finished fourth in the state. They reached 28 wins. That was a very historic season for our Nets. In cross country, our girdles finished fifth in the state last weekend. Our boys finished seventh in the state last weekend. And our competitive cheerleading squad won region last weekend. And they're headed to making this, this weekend for state. So good luck to our cheerleaders. Lots of positive news on that. As we approach Thanksgiving, it's a really good time for us to reflect and to show gratitude as well as show some kindness. Four of our employees in the Pickens County school system have been nominated for the Hidden Heroes Campaign that is sponsored by the Georgia Institute of School Improvement, or GLICI for short, for being a difference maker in education. From our school system, we've got Natalie Coker from the high school. We have Barbara King from Tate. Wayne Gable, one of our bus drivers. And our very own Jacob Poole, who's here tonight, our facility supervisor. So voting ends at 5:00 next Friday. It's a statewide recognition. Hopefully, we can have one or more of our employees chosen for a hidden hero. And then additionally, yesterday was World Kindness Day. Our district has pushed out a growing kindness initiative over this upcoming holiday season to encourage our local community to share acts of kindness in an effort to make our community and our world a little better. And our link is also posted there as well. And then lastly, our upcoming dates, we do have Thanksgiving break coming up, the 25th to 29th of November. Our work session is December the 6th and our regular board meeting for December on December the 12th. That's our superintendent's board. Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Okay, we'll move now to our action items. And first up is our approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented?
So.
Joe Wiegentown?
Second.
Tony Gartrill? So any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, okay. And then we have the approval of the FY25 Budget Amendment, which Ms. Smith sent us. Do I have a motion to approve the FY25 Budget Amendment as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Finley? I hear a second? All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Just point out that was moving basically funds that was budgeted from one category to another.
Yes.
And adding state bus bonds.
Yeah. All in favor? Five oh. All right. So our next item is the wrestling facility at Pickens High School. So Dr. Thomas, do you have any comments?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I do. So we now have a new wrestling facility on the campus of Pickens High School. It has generated a great deal of excitement for our community. In last month, in our October meeting, we received public input asking us to consider dedicating that facility to an individual. Our Board Policy FDC says it is permissible for certain areas within a school, such as libraries, gymnasiums, athletic fields, et cetera, to bear the names of outstanding citizens of the county, state, or nation. According to our policy, the superintendent makes a recommendation to the board. Today, I would like to recommend to our Board of Education that we dedicate our new wrestling facility to an outstanding citizen in our community. Someone whose name is synonymous with wrestling at Pickens High School. Someone whose passion for wrestling, leadership, and a wavering commitment to the development of athletes has shaped not only the success of our program, but also the lives of countless individuals. Through this person's dedication, he has helped build champions in the ring. But more importantly, he has instilled values of discipline, respect, and sportsmanship in those student athletes he has coached. I believe it is only fitting that our new facility, a place where future generations of wrestlers will train, learn, and grow, bears the name of someone who has given so much to the sport. So Pickens County Board of Education, it is my recommendation that we dedicate our new wrestling facility to Coach Tom Jokins.
Second.
At this time, I'd like to make the motion that we dedicate the wrestling facility to Coach the wrestling facility to Coach Tom Jenkins.
Second. All in favor? Five oh. We're delighted to meet you.
I hope these people don't know something I don't know. Most of the time, they don't dedicate buildings to you until you're dead. But I, I want you to know, I really appreciate this. And if you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. Because it is, it's, it's going to make a difference for all students at Pickens High School in this county. Because it's going to take the place, it's not going to be. Wrestling, you don't want to have to compete for the gym floor to practice. That's going to help basketball, volleyball, band, everybody, okay? Um, I'm, I'm, y'all should know better than to give me the mic. Many, many years ago, I got a chance to go to Annapolis, the Naval Academy. I didn't want to go, but, uh, hey, I got a day off from school. I don't know, it might have been two days. But, uh, I went. That trip has stuck with me my entire life. I don't know if you all know this or not, but every cadet at Annapolis, West Point, or Air Force Academy has to participate in a sport. They have to. Why? I was told the number one reason was to teach them to budget their time. Now imagine, that cadet at Annapolis, folks, they are regimented from daylight to dark. They're told when to eat, when to sleep, and everything else. It also teaches them how to be a member of a team or a group of people to work toward a common goal. That's what the real world wants to know when you get out there. Whether you're going on to college or you're going to the workplace. And, um, athletics, coaches are teachers. They're not just coaches. They're teachers. And they're teaching the most important skills in the school. I know some of y'all don't believe that, but they do. They are. All right? Uh, that's my take on it. And I appreciate you all for what you all done. And Coach Parker, because you all have provided some of the best teaching stations around. Okay? Y'all have done a great job, and I appreciate Coach's head. I fought it for a long time. Tommy can tell you. Okay? Didn't always have this kind of support. But I want to thank each and every one of you for what you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Y'all come up. Y'all come over.
I even got a two, just two more old wrestlers that might want to come up here, John.
Three. God, I'm sorry. Hey, darn right. How friendly I was with the nun. I don't miss him. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Don't land it, that one come up, John. Can we get it all in?
Thank you, Brad.
Okay. Next up is the, uh, our Consent Agenda approval event. So on that consent agenda tonight are financial reports, natural gas contracts, out-of-state overnight field trips, a memorandum of understanding of compelling diversity minutes from our October and November 8th meeting. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Gartrill? Do I hear a second? Joe Wiegonton? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right. All right, next up, um, Dr. Thomas, uh, public participation. Have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have. We have one person who has followed our board policy and notified us that she would like to speak with us tonight is Ms. Diane Burge. Ms. Burge has requested to speak with us about the tax exemption limit for our seniors. This time, Ms. Burge will call you up in the podium.
Ms. Burge, uh, as you come, I just remind you, you've got three minutes. And also, just, we won't respond, we're just here to listen tonight.
I understand. Um, thank you, board, and thank you, Dr. Thomas. Um, we've spoken. And, uh, thank you, Martha. She's very helpful, uh, in helping me. And I want to preface this by saying I am a big person for education. My daughter-in-law is a teacher. My two grandsons are honor roll students. My one grandson is the district's representation for the eighth grade, and he is a Beta Club, uh, member. So education is very important to my family. And I, as a single mother who raised kids and managed to get a degree in the course of raising my kids, um, it is something very important to me. Um, however, uh, at this age and in, um, understanding some of the things that seniors in this community are going through, uh, also looking at some studies that were done by outside source for the city, which, uh, discussed some of the needs of seniors and said that this was an area that was probably not, um, as well attended to as other areas. I feel the need to address the board and ask them for consideration um, to look at the tax exemption limit for the seniors, um, in this area. And, um, based on what we discussed, uh, that has not been addressed since the 90s. So with the amount being twenty-four, I think it's twenty-four, five, uh, it's a considerable low amount. Um, I have had the experience, I live in a 55-plus community. I've had neighbors that have moved out after losing a spouse and no longer had two incomes and could not afford to live here. Um, our, our little community behind Piedma Hospital is a very close community. A lot of people are volunteers. I myself have subbed in your system. I love Harmony, uh, had the most fun there at Harmony. Had a little challenge at the middle school. When I, uh, I, uh, discovered that I was being recorded by one of the students on his laptop. But, uh, I just take all that in stride. It's a part of the, the education system. But I do want to, um, seriously address this for the seniors. I think there is a big need to give seniors some kind of relief, uh, in this community. Um, I've talked to Rick Jasper, who is our, uh, state representative. He feels like it's something that is, uh, in accordance to what he would agree to on addressing it. And he has said, um, that he thought there's been a long time since they addressed the limits, uh, of this. So I respectfully am asking the board to, uh, consider, uh, raising that, uh, limit to help other people out in the community. I know that there are a lot of seniors that are dependent on our seniors', um, center for food and to complete their weekly, uh, meals. Um, and so I am now a senior, senior, and I'm now very aware of a lot of the needs of, of seniors and also the lack of needs that are being met by this community. Um, uh, we, we volunteer at the hospital. Like I said, I've subbed at the schools. Uh, we're a very big part of the community. We keep your taxes there crime right now. Uh, we do a lot for, um, the community. And, um, we do believe in education. So if it is something that you would consider, um, you know, addressing, we would, we would love to have some, uh, output form from you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Doc, board comments. Dr. Thomas, did you, did you have something else before board comments?
No, this is the time.
Okay.
This is the time, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any board comments?
I want to thank Ms. Burge for coming out and speaking to us. I, I really appreciate that. We always want people to come talk to us. And we'll listen, um, and it works a whole lot better than, than just being mad out in the community to come and talk to us, because it's a joint effort. So I appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate Martha, who was very helpful. And Dr. Travis, who talked to me, uh, some about this and actually helped me, uh, prepare for this. So, thank you very much.
And Coach Jenkins, uh, just, you may not, you may not have, you may have forgotten this, but you were a much younger man and I was a student. But you shared your vision before I graduated high school about starting the wrestling program. And you, I was so small, you coveted me being a wrestler, but it wasn't in place then. It came right after me. So you carried that vision for a long time. So it's a, a special honor for some of us that were, you were our coach, to see you get, uh, disnamed after you, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I do have one last thing. In our audience tonight, we do have one of our high school seniors, uh, Mr. Grayson Leddington. Grayson, come up to the podium, if you don't mind, please. Last year as a board, one of the things that we agreed to was to fund opportunities for some of our high school students to attend the University of North Georgia's Summers, Summer Honors Program. And Grayson was one of our high school students who attended. And actually, he was voted like the most outstanding student at UNG last summer. That earned Grayson a $2,500 scholarship to UNG upon graduation, as well as automatic admittance into their highly competitive honors program. So Grayson's here to tell us a little bit about that summer experience. So Grayson?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for having me out to talk about such an amazing program as UNG Summer Honors. When I first rolled into the Longhills campus, UNG, I really didn't know what I was kind of getting myself into. I mean, sure, I knew there was going to be academic sessions. I knew we were going to go to a ropes course and kind of play around with some rock climbing walls. And I knew there'd be an overall theme of leadership. But I didn't know that I was about to step into one of the most transformative experiences in my high school career. Now that I'm on the other side of it, I can really say that UNG Summer Honors is such an awesome gift to have been able to experience. And it really does mean the world to me that I was able to go. Uh, starting on the academic side of things, uh, as a class, we were privy to private, uh, lectures from college professors, which gave much-needed insight, uh, on how a college class would actually be run, as well as giving us some experience in our major before we even had to apply to a college at all. Uh, for me, this looked like sitting down one-on-one with the head of Entrepreneurship and Innovation Pathway at UNG, uh, just to pick his brain about what his major looked like. Uh, and it is mainly for this reason that I've decided to continue into UNG after high school. Um, at the ropes course, uh, we went through several leadership-intensive exercises, events, and games, uh, which really tested our leadership skills like accountability, communication, and trust. Uh, and believe me, when you're 60 feet in the air on a telephone pole and the only thing keeping you from free-falling is a rope held on the ground by a 17-year-old, you're going to get some trust pretty quickly. But, but beyond these things, uh, UNG Summer Honors was really a community. And it was so evident in the way that they ran their organization. The people who were head of the whole thing, to the counselors who ran the day-to-day, to the students who participated, everyone gave 100% of their effort every day. And it was really evident in the outcomes of each day. Um, and it's for mainly these reasons that I would like to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart for providing such a generous scholarship, not just for me, but for four other Pickens students. For that in perspective, there were 20 students total at the thing. So over, so a quarter of the students who attended UNG Summer Honors from Pickens High School, um, which really meant a lot to us. And I would urge you to continue providing scholarships similar to this, uh, to classes who are coming up after me. Thank you so much for having me out here tonight. Uh, I can answer any questions if you guys would like.
Grayson? Thank you. That's fantastic. Thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Nothing further, do I have a motion to adjourn? Joe Wiegonton?
Second.
Gibson? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We are adjourned at 7:06 PM.